Welcome to the February 18th meeting of the Kingston Planning Board. We have a nice agenda tonight, it's not overly crowded. And the first thing we're going to do is have a roll call, we're going to call to order. To my left, we have Dennis Quintel, who is our Town Engineer. Rob Tersolo, who is a member of the Planning Board. Ben Romano, a member of the Planning Board. Peter Coffin, a member of the Planning Board. My name is Lynn Merrill, I'm the Chair. To my right is Robin Carter, who's our Land Use Administrator. Ellie Alessio is our Selectmen's Representative. Liam Jerome is our alternate. Robin Duquet is Vice Chair. And Glenn Greenwood is our Town Planner. So we have a quorum, and we are ready to start business tonight. So for those of you in the audience, just to give you a quick rundown of how we conduct our business here, the first thing we do is have the applicant come forward. The applicant will present his, the proposal. And then, once the proposal is presented, we hear comments from our town departments, and our engineer, and our planner. Then there might be some Planning Board discussion, questions that we might ask of the applicant. When that is completed, we allow for public comment. And for public comment, you have to come forward to the microphone to make certain that everybody watching on YouTube from home can hear you, and hear all of your comments. You can please be as succinct as you can, but give us all the comments that you wish. And if someone else has already given a comment, but you still wish to talk, all you need to say is "I agree with them" or "don't agree with them," unless you have something new to add. When public comment is over, it comes back to the Planning Board, we discuss, and we make decisions. So, and just joined us is Chris Patnaut, who is another alternate for the Planning Board. So, we're going to begin with our first piece of board business. And that is the determination of regional impact for the amended site plan proposal that's coming forward tonight. So whenever we have a plan that comes forward, we have to determine if there's a regional impact. Is this plan going to affect other communities surrounding Kingston? Plastow, Route 125 traffic, that sort of thing. And we need to do that for every proposal that comes forward. So that is the very first thing we're going to do for the proposal for the Residential Village at Granite Fields. So, ready to attempt that? Shall we?
Madam Chair, I'm going to recuse myself from, even though this is just board business, from the hearing tonight, because I was sitting on the ZBA when they came before us. And I, just for the safety of the Planning Board decision, I trust you guys will come up with whatever you do, and it will be fine. So I don't want to be challenged. So, I'm going to recuse myself before the DRI hearing.
Okay.
I need to comment on that.
Thank you. So the first order for the development of a regional impact is, do we believe there's any school impact for this particular proposal, since there's no children in an over 55 community? Do we believe the answer? Ellie?
I'm going to raise a point of order, Madam Chair. I understand the need to review the impact for regional impact. But this is not that type of situation, because it's-
I agree.
...a reiteration of previous decisions, and hopefully a final resolution. So, I don't see how the, I mean, I would, if you're going to, if you feel that we have to read all this, then just read it, and do it one, two, two, four times, because it has no impact on anything else but that development itself.
And the only reason, yeah Glenn?
Yeah, you can, you can, the reason it's here is because the Board made the decision previously that we would do this at every work session, but our work session this month was canceled, so we didn't have that work session. So, it is perfectly appropriate for someone to take a motion, make a motion at this point, and say, because this entire proposal is about one dwelling unit, the possibility for one dwelling unit, that there simply isn't any regional impact.
Still moved. Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Done. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you Ellie. Okay. So the first hearing, the applicant is Father and Son Construction. The property owner is Residential Village at Granite Fields Condominium Unit Owners Association. The property address is Mulligan Way and Bent Grass. It's map R3, Lot 4, land unit 4. It's zoned Commercial 3-Agrifer. This is an application for a proposal to amend the existing site plan for a condominium development to relocate a limited common area and its associated unit to a new proposed location. Total density of the development shall not exceed 34 units. Because there are many people sitting at the table that have not been, were not here when this project was first here and approved. I just want to give a very, very brief history of how we got to where we are today, so that that can perhaps limit some of the discussion moving forward, or questions that you might have. So the project began in 2013. There was an ordinance that was voted on by the residents of Kingston, the voters of Kingston, to allow an over 55 unit in the commercial zone if it was... At one point in time, zoning did not allow any residential development at all in the commercial zone. There was a warrant article asking for residential development to be in a commercial zone if it's 1,000 feet back from the central line of Route 125. The townspeople approved that, and that's why this development began. There were a couple of issues that came forward as we went through the proposal. The proposal was approved for 34 units. The first problem that we encountered was, at that time, Kingston did not have any regulations for bonds for private roads. All the bonds were just for public roads. So therefore, a bond was not required for the roads for this project. That issue was noted, and it was changed, but it was after this project was approved. The plan approved, was approved for 34 units. And the issues became over the placement of unit number 20. So, units number 18 and 19 were set back from the road overlooking the golf course. Unit number 20, as you can see on your plan, and Charlie will be telling you about that tonight, was sitting directly in front of them. When the people purchased units 18 and 19, they did not want to have the home in front of them. So when those units were sold, their deeds were prepared, giving them their local common, individual common area all the way to the road. So that unit 20 could not be located there, because that land was no longer common land for the association. So the developer at that time wanted to relocate unit 20. The first thing he wanted to do was locate it in the circle, in the, on the Bent Grass Circle on the inside. That came before the Planning Board. The Planning Board said no. And the reason for that was that he was going to take the access to the septic system away, so that if the septic system needed repairs done, or if it needed replacement in kind, it would be difficult to get the equipment in to do that work. So the Planning Board said no. And there ended up being a lawsuit on that, and the town won. The roads were not built according to the plan and the engineering plans that were approved by the town of Kingston. There were drainage issues, there was water entering basements, there were all kinds of issues. The town stepped in, they put a cease and desist on everything, and they have, we came to a compromise, and they fixed the drainage issues. But to this point in time, I believe everything is pretty much done. Dennis, our Town Engineer, did a number of inspections on the property, and we believe the road's pretty well done, except for the last coat of paving, I believe, is that correct? So, what comes to us tonight is a new place to relocate that 34th unit. And they want to relocate it within that 1,000-foot setback from Route 125. Because that was an ordinance, they needed to go before the zoning board of adjustment. They did that, and the zoning board of adjustment gave permission for that to happen. So now they're before the Planning Board, because even though the zoning board gave permission, they're now making a change to the site plan, and the Planning Board needs to approve that or not. So, is that pretty well? Anything you want to add to that? Okay. So, if you would please give your name, and who you're from, and who you represent, Charlie, and we'll move forward.
All right. Charlie Zilch from SCC and Associates, here on behalf of, well, I'm with Tony Veligore. He's the President and the Board Director for the Granite Fields condo association. And the applicant, Todd Fitzgerald, from Father and Son Construction. So, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Board staff, did a great presentation, pretty much covered everything that I really needed to talk about, other than the fact that, as you know, there was, there's quite a bit of history with this unit 20 over the years. Jim DeFrain, who's passed, he did a pretty good job getting things back up to speed, addressing a lot of these problems. But the thing with, with Jim is, he didn't get along with the Condominium Association all the time. And so, we had this application before the Board a couple of years ago, we were doing fairly well with it, and they couldn't come to an agreement between the Association and Jim, and so we pulled the application, unfortunately. So, Condominium Association now has a title to that last remaining unit. And so, as you know, it's problematic. We don't want to put it in front of the units that have already been built. So we kind of went back to this proposal again. And it had been two years since we've been before the Board of Adjustment, so we had to go back in and have that variance granted again, and the Board saw a fit to do so. So that was done in December. So we have a fresh zoning board application. There were a couple of conditions that, one of which, the development couldn't exceed 34 units, which this will not, and that it required Planning Board approval, and that brings us here tonight. So this is an amendment, to be considered an amendment to the original subdivision plan, or site plan, that was submitted and approved back in 2013, and subsequently built with the exception of this remaining unit. And the only other thing left to do, Tony, is final coat of pavement. And so what they're hoping to do is to finalize this thing, finally. Todd's going to build the home there, and the money generated from the sale of the lot is going to give them their final coat of pavement, and these people can move on with their lives. And we can be done with this project, which is, I think, I'm pretty happy about it, and I've only been involved with it for four years. So you guys go back quite a while. With that being said, the development itself is, as you know, 34 elderly units, individual units, on, served by the private roadways that come in here. They're also on a community water system, and they also have community leach fields. What's, one thing that's kind of nice about relocating this unit over to this other area on Bent Grass, just inside that 1,000-foot setback, is it will still be on the same sewer system. So it'll be into the same pump chambers, and up into the same fields, so that works out really well. The water is still available right there, there is an access point right there. And as far as the location of it, one thing that I was able to press on the zoning board is that, when you pull into this development, this won't be the first unit you drive by. You actually go by other units, because of the way this line is skewed, and the way the development is set up. It actually looks like this unit would be further into the development, if you were to guess where the 1,000-foot setback is. So, it's a good location for it, I think it resolves a lot of problems here. Great site distance, there's no issue with the driveway, and we're right at basically the apex of the hill, the top of the hill, so we'll put a culvert under the driveway and allow drainage to go either way. So, it works out pretty good. Couple of waivers that we submitted along with it, we can go through when you have, when you're ready for that. As you said, Dennis has had a chance to review, Glenn's had a chance to review, and I have comments from them. I did submit the question to the state just today, whether or not moving this unit from one side or the other would require state subdivision approval. And the way I read it is that it doesn't, because we're not changing the amount of units, we're not changing the unit flow, and we're not changing the use. So they didn't really see any need to it. We will do a collections sewer system tie-in plan, because it has changed, and just make sure that we get, that we can have a state approval on the, on the tie-in. No other state approvals, no change to drainage, doesn't require any change to the condominium documents. The area that unit 20 that we're going to give up, in front of units 18 and 19, the limited common area that's around each one of these units, that'll just be absorbed into the common area. And so we're basically replacing common area and unit area to this other location. So it works out pretty well. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Glenn, would you please give us your comments?
So, I have, this is the first one I care for this application for the Board to make a decision regarding the payment jurisdiction. My perspective, the plan is complete in the 35 days I'm called during the decision. The proposal is to construct a final approved unit at the former Hawks Ridge.
By the way.
It's on the public conference. So, the proposal is to construct a final approved unit at the former Hawks Ridge H. Restrictive development. The ZBA granted a variance to allow this unit to be located no closer to Andrew 125 than 950 feet. This is a note that's on the plan, and this is what the design team has designed to it. And then I just have a form of comments upon reviewing this plan, despite of the longest plan of any plan I've ever seen in my town in my 35 years, so I would read that, but it's a really long plan. So I'd have first that the Planning Board should formally state that this project does not meet the standards for a project of regional impact. Thank you guys who are doing that. Is she one of the plans that used to be recorded, and I think that's typical for us, because we'll find all our plan notes. I think the registry is going to require us to get a written log for the plan of Plastow.
Is it, is it because we show on the cover sheet, we're touching the line? It doesn't actually go over the line? So we didn't, no, and I, you know what, I'll have to get off in my draftsman, because we had this problem once before. Because the registry thought it did, because of the tax map sketch, but it doesn't. So I'll, I'll correct that on the cover sheet. But we did notify the town.
That would be in the...
Yeah. So we don't need to, we don't need to pull Plastow.
That's, got you.
Thank you.
All right, then I have note nine on Sheet 1, references active and substantial development incorrectly. You say 904.15, but it's 904.17. But my bigger issue is whether this regulation is applicable to this proposal. All that will be required if this is approved by the Planning Board is a building permit. Active and substantial development refers to when a detailed project may take several years to complete and provides a mechanism to allow a property owner to protect the development from changes in zoning. This does not appear to exist for this application, so I suggest just getting rid of that note. But that's something for the Board to consider. I assume that this proposal does not change the existing proposed impervious lot coverage, since it is relocating a previously approved lot. I have, and elevation view of the unit isn't provided. Elevation views were provided with the first proposal. I'm presuming, and Charlie can verify, that they're likely going to put a unit in there that looks just like the units that are in there, or will forever look like the unit that doesn't look like the others that are in there.
If I could ask Tony maybe, and Todd a question, is there a covenant that says the building has to look a certain way?
It's, it's, my law is that, that it has to meet the, the age restriction unit of max two-bedroom.
Okay.
And the white stairways and things like that.
Okay, so you're going to be building-
So it could look different then.
It could, but it won't look, I mean, it'll-
It'll look similar to those, I guess.
It will, okay.
Right next to it. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Finally, is there a community clubhouse facility ever going to happen at the site, do we think?
With the current Board of Directors and current residences that we, we have now, no one is looking to build the community center at this point in time.
I thought that was, those are, those are my thoughts. Other than, I didn't write it here, but they are asking for some waivers, so those are things that the Board would have to consider, and they would then have to show up on the, on Sheet 1.
Okay.
So, my, some of my comments are, number one was about the, sorry. My first comment was about the, whether DES needed to require a subdivision permit, or amend the subdivision permit, because I had talked to one of the agents from the state about some, an issue similar to this on another project, and I said, oh, by the way, what about this one? And they said, have the applicant get in touch with us. So that's what, that's my number one comment, and like Charlie says, I did see the email today that said that it doesn't need state subdivision approval. So you're all set with that one. Regarding stormwater runoff, the original plan for the development, Sheet 7A shows the proposed dwelling unit and many others to be constructed with roof drains. I don't believe any dwellings were built with roof drains. Surface runoff from this proposed unit and driveway will have no impact to the existing stormwater features at this time, since it's proposed, impervious surface is much less than the proposed community center and parking lot, not yet built. If the center is ever built, then stormwater design should be reevaluated, and this could be a condition of approval, I would think. My comment number three was note nine, which Glenn brought up, about the active and substantial was, development was 904.15A, but it's actually 904.17A2. And so, if you choose to eliminate that, then you can eliminate it, or just change the number from 15 to 17. Comment number four, note 10 refers to 904.166, compliance with the Town Maintenance and Inspection Stormwater Management Regulations. Current reference paragraph needs to be revised, but on this, but it's on page 908.33. That's in the new stormwater regulations that we have. I've talked to Glenn about that, that the numbering scheme for that, paragraphs need to be redone. But it's on page 908.33. Comment number five, 904.11 and 12, a bond is required for engineering inspections, or the onsite inspections. Number six, 907.383, performance guarantee amount is required to be finalized prior to approval. 907.4A, performance guarantee must be in place prior to issuing of a building permit. And number eight, there were no details provided for water and sewer installation. So I was wondering, perhaps, should note 12 be revised to include that all details from the approved plan would also apply to this plan, which would be the details for tying in the sewer and the water into this lot. And those were my comments at this time.
Have no department comments. So, I think, anyone want to make a motion for, to accept jurisdiction? Any discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the Board? Okay. Then we'll open the floor for public comment. Yes, yes sir.
Again, I'm Anthony Veligore from 25 Bent Grass Circle. I am also the current President of the Board of Directors of the Association. And I want to let you know that the, we have 100% commitment from our community to move this lot and tell it to, sell it to Todd Fitzgerald, so he can build a house there. And that we ask this, this Board to look favorably upon it and allow us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Going once, going twice, we are closing public comment. Back to the Board. Is the Board ready to accept the waiver requests? Okay. Shall we, go ahead?
So, the three waivers?
Yep, the three waivers.
The first waiver is Article 904.5B. It's the fee schedule. And basically, the town is looking for $5,000 professional review and engineering account put on, and we submitted $2,500, whereas there was no drainage, fairly simple, straightforward plan that didn't think that $5,000 was necessary.
Okay. Do we have any comment from the Board?
No, I would just ask, I guess, Dennis, if there's any reason that we shouldn't consider that.
Okay. Motion? Second? Motion by Ellie, second by Robin. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, the second waiver request was for Site Plan Regulation 904.3, requiring a preliminary review. As you know, this plan's been here before, the Board before, and was under peer review. At that time, we knew we had a pretty solid plan, we submitted this yet again, just basically replicated that, updated the plan set. So, I don't think anything changed. The Board accepted that waiver two years ago. I would hope that you'd consider it again.
Okay. Any discussion from the Board? We have a motion.
Motion to approve the waiver request, waiving the preliminary review.
Motion by Robin, second by Ellie. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Okay, and the third waiver, just a little bit different. It's a plan note, or a plan condition, I'd have to say. So, looking at this, when the plan was approved back in 2013, the regulation was 208.5C1. And at that time, the requirement that there was a building setback from building to building of about 40 to 50 feet depended upon the type of unit that was being proposed. And now, when you look at that regulation, it's flat 60 feet, doesn't have any regard to the type of unit. So what I'm looking for with this is for basically the Board to reaffirm the waiver that carries with this amended site plan. So basically, what I'm looking for is, and not really consideration of the actual setback between the buildings, it's already been granted, the whole development has been built to that standard. I'm just looking for a reaffirmation of that waiver to be carried with an amended site plan, that's an amendment to the original site plan, if that makes sense. So, I'll read it. Basically, it said, "Please accept this letter as formal request to reaffirm the waiver granted to Regulation 208.5C1 formerly requiring 40 to 50-foot separation between buildings, currently 60 feet. This development was approved," and I note the record plan number, "with a waiver granted to this regulation allowing homes to be sighted no closer than 25 feet from one another. This was conditioned upon that the building's units were to be equipped with fire suppression sprinklers." The development has been constructed accordingly, meaning many of the units are within, are at that 25-foot setback, or slightly greater, in that every unit carries fire suppression sprinklers. So, the application, and this application is to be considered an amendment to that approved development plan, and reaffirmation of the waiver will allow for the placement of the proposed building to remain similar in layout as the preceding 33 units already constructed.
Second?
Second.
Can I, may I speak?
Well, yeah, now, now we're ready for any discussion?
Yes. Okay, this is, this is an odd waiver request, because it actually addresses zoning, not regulations.
Okay.
And the Planning Board doesn't have the authority to provide relief to the zoning ordinance. But what Charlie says is true about the original development being allowed to build at that closer standard. So I guess, when I think this through, I look at it a little bit differently. I'm, I'm not looking at this as the Planning Board affirming. My take is, they went to the ZBA in this year, or the end of last year?
December.
In December.
Yeah.
And that request showed the ZBA where they wanted to place the unit. And with that being the case, the approval of the ZBA of this location to- And with that being the case, the approval of the ZBA of this location, to me, provides the relief necessary for them to build it within this area. And therefore, that area allows that it's closer than the sixty foot standard in our current ordinance. But if the planning board doesn't look at it from the perspective of the action that the ZBA took, I think that we would have to send them back to the ZBA, which is not my desire. They, they brought an application for variance to the ZBA that showed where they wanted this new unit to lie. And so my, my take would be, what you're really reaffirming is the decision made by the ZBA in December, not going all the way back to twenty thirteen and the circumstance that existed there.
Who granted the original waiver, was it the ZBA or the planning board?
Planning board.
And if we did that, it was a leak.
It was, it's, when you go back and you look at the minutes, they were talking about reducing it down to thirty feet, I think, and then they had review by the fire department, said that twenty-five feet would be okay, as long as there were sprinklers. So they, they granted the waiver to twenty-five feet. And it's noted on that cover sheet, that twenty thirteen plan.
Yeah, I know, I, I looked.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm not trying to throw a wrench in this, I'm just trying to provide an avenue for the board not to be doing something they're not really authorized to do.
Okay. Well, also, before your suggestion, in the minutes of the meeting, the planning board meeting, the public hearing of September twenty-first, twenty-ten, motion was made and seconded to waive section two oh eight dot five C, section one, regarding the minimum distance between buildings, from between forty and fifty feet depending on the units to thirty feet as shown on the project's plan. A distance of twenty-five feet was determined after discussions and meetings with the Kingston Fire and Police. All buildings will be sprinkled in accordance with NFPA thirteen D and approval by the Kingston Fire Department. Motion made by Mr. Albert, seconded by Mr. Pope, and it passed unanimously. So we've already affirmed that they can be closer. Yep.
Let's just take it one step further, because I think we should really be kind to both the developer and the condominium association. This has been a long time coming. I think if you add to the motion to affirm the, the original decision by the planning board and to affirm the decision by the zoning board in December of twenty twenty-four, we can't affirm their decision?
I don't know if public comment, who wants to speak? The zoning board did not approve that location. They approved the setback.
They approved that it could fall within?
It could go anywhere. They, they were very clear that they did not approve the location.
Okay. Well, I still think we need to move forward, affirm the third waiver, and put this issue to bed.
Well, we can't waive it because we can't waive as an ordinance, so we would have to be instead waiving an affirmation of the decision made previously by the planning board. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Could we make a motion that no waiver is required, given the previous decision?
Glenn, you're looking constipated.
Well, this is, there's no way for me to hide from the fact that even though twenty-ten was a long time ago, I was sitting in his chair when that happened. So if I'm taking issue with it now, one would wonder why I didn't take issue with it then.
You're much wiser now.
One would like to assume that, right? So, I mean, I, it is clear by the plan that we took that action. There is no question about that. And it didn't get challenged in any way. Doesn't mean that in twenty twenty-five, we're authorized to do the same thing.
So I do have a note on the plan that I, I'd like to put on amended site plans. It says, in addition to the improvement shown on this plan, the development is still subject to all applicable notes, conditions, and/or restrictions shown on the existing approved site plan, and I referenced that site plan. I mean, that, that also covers it, in the fact that?
That, that covers it better than referring to a waiver being granted today.
Okay.
Because if we, if we grant a waiver today, I'm sorry, people, we're doing something illegal. And there may be all sorts of reasons for doing that, but perhaps the best reason for doing it is to simply say it was the approved layout for the project in twenty-ten and twenty-thirteen, when the original plan was approved. So there's no reason for it to be different now.
So there's no reason for us to do anything now?
I, I really shy away from granting a waiver that we really don't have the right to do.
Well, I rescind my second.
I rescind my first.
Okay.
And the record should be clear that what the planning board is saying is that this unit is being placed with the same allowances that the original units were placed during the original approved process.
Charlie, the note you just referenced, that exists currently, or that would?
It's on the plan, yes. Yeah, I can certainly see it'd be a different situation if we were coming here looking for an additional unit, unit number thirty-five.
Right, this, this is a unit that was approved.
Correct.
It was approved to be placed as close to the other units as all the others have been approved to be.
Yes.
So if we don't do, if we don't do an action now, we're not doing anything illegal, and we're relying on the factual basis that existed with the original.
Correct. And this is, it clearly labeled an amendment to that plan.
It is.
So Charlie, you are withdrawing a request for the waiver?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we're good. Good discussion, I'm glad we covered it, so at least it's clear for any, if anything comes up in the future.
And you do understand what we're asking for in the forty minutes?
Okay, any further board discussion? See none, do we have any motion?
Possibly, I just have some follow-up questions. So both Glenn and Dennis, I believe, referenced note nine on sheet one. Would there be, if that were removed, I'm assuming we could make it a condition to remove it as opposed to a condition to rename it?
I think it just comes off the plan.
There's no rea-
There really isn't any reason, no.
You have no reason for that note, other than the protection that testing would grant, right?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. The only, the only benefit for that, for that phrase to a developer is that it protects you against changes in the zoning ordinance. But this isn't, we're at the end of this project. This isn't gonna take two or three years to accomplish this. This, this is gonna happen with building.
No, it won't.
So you don't have, there's no reason why you can't remove that.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Just checking my notes.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended site plan at Tax MAP R three lot four, Bentgrass Circle and Mulligan Way in Kingston, with the condition that items number one, two, four, five, six, seven, and eight from the town engineer, and items number two, four, five, and six, well, six, I guess not, so two, four, and five from the town planner be addressed in the final plan.
Well, two doesn't need to be addressed because we're not going to require Plaster to sign it because Plaster's been taken out of the plan.
But so, the plan would be modified then to show that it's not within the town line?
Yes. Could I ask a quick question? Dennis brought up a couple of points here, five, six, and seven, about bond, performance What is it we're looking for specifically in that? The bond required for engineering inspection of onsite improvements? Are we looking for any more inspections out there? I know that, I think the final coat of pavement is the last thing needed out there.
What are you thinking, Dennis, for the performance guarantee?
Well, there's work that needs to be done on the site, and the sewer has to be installed, excavating needs to be done, and once that work is done, I, I think an inspection would be needed to make sure that the stormwater, the grading is, is appropriate. My comment number two talks about the details for putting in the water in the sewer, so.
Yep, I'll add that.
That could be, again, that could be a condition as far as making sure that that note gets changed to add that.
I'll add that.
So again, I don't, I didn't want to not say something about a bond situation or inspections, and then have something not done according to what the original plan intent was as far as the swales and the drainage and whatnot. So that's what I, I was just thinking of, so.
So the performance guarantee, performance guarantee would be for the construction of the building, but it would have nothing to do with use, with the paving of the, the final paving of the street?
Well, I don't know if that's, that was part of this application, I don't know.
I don't think it is, and that's, and I, but I'm just.
If you want to add that on as far as the bond is concerned, or making sure that the final coat gets put on appropriately, then that's certainly something you could do.
That's up to the board, but.
I don't know if that includes paving the driveways again, too, because sometimes I think some of the driveways were, not all of them needed to be resurfaced as well. So I don't know if that's part of the resurfacing, is that true?
Was, was there a bond in place for any of the pavement, as far as you know?
No.
There was not?
There was no bond. I also think that the association, the condominium association has a strong desire to see it finished.
I think that's what I'm understanding.
We did do inspections during construction.
I know, I know, yeah, it's all done.
Could I suggest that the pre-account and the professional review and engineer account is kept at twenty-five hundred until final sign-off? Keep that refreshed?
That would make sense.
Are you anticipating it needing to be more than that, Dennis?
No.
Okay, that takes care of that issue.
So no bond, just keep the S R.
Yep.
Well, I was just thinking that, I guess we can revise the motion to say that items five, six, and seven are addressed by the existing, the bond that we.
Well, if we're not required anything, we don't need to mention them at all.
Okay, strike them. Strike five, six, and seven from the conditions.
So we need to tie in the sewer.
It was number two.
Yep.
So one, two, four, and eight from Dennis's. Yep. And then from Glenn's, I'm looking, I, some of these are just notes, I don't know that they necessarily need to be conditioned, so it would just be two. Do we want to include language that the, the final construction will resemble the, the home that's located next to it, or it's fine just to have that reflected in the minutes?
I think it's reflected in the minutes.
Okay. So yeah, just two, that would be the only outstanding, I don't know from ones.
So you have your revised motion, and we have your revised second. Any further discussion from the board? See none, all those in favor? Congratulations. Okay, moving forward with board business. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the January seventh meeting? Motion by Robin, second by Peter. Any discussion, errors, omissions, all those in favor? Motion to accept the minutes of the January twenty-first meeting?
So moved.
Robin and Peter? Any discussion, errors, omissions, see none, all those in favor?
Done.
Correspondence? We have an invoice from Civil Construction Management for the Sanborn Site subdivision plan in the amount of two thousand fifteen dollars. Any questions? All in favor of paying that? We received a letter from Dan Parks. Hi, planning board, I would like to request a five-year extension for the duration of the project at Seven Small Parks Road, R nineteen dash thirty-two to November twenty thirty. The current agreement goes through November twenty twenty-five. I'm not even halfway done yet.
So. Major update on this. The, the agreement that I had prepared but couldn't find any signed copy of, Paula, was it Paula?
Yeah.
Found the signed agreement.
Okay.
By the Board of Selectmen, agreeing to, agreeing to twenty twenty-five.
And at what?
Agreeing to twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
So his approval has never lapsed.
Okay.
So the board is able to consider an extension without a public hearing, because it is just a continuation of the plan because he's going slower than he had originally anticipated going.
So question we have in front of us for Dennis, does, does the road need to be checked? Does the bond amount need to be evaluated? Because we know that road, construction costs have greatly increased over the last few years.
Well, I, I think we talked about that in one of our last meetings, about that, and that the, the road is, is not inspected, but it's checked on a regular basis. And I think the highway department, if they found that there was anything that was starting to be a problem, I think that they would notify Mr. Parks, do we have a bond in place? My first thought was to increase the bond because of costs going up in the future, but I think that, in talking about it, I think that the board agreed that, I think that bond is in place, and if there is any damage that's starting to happen, that he could, at that point in time, be ordered to fix it. And if it got worse and he didn't fix it, then it's a matter of withdrawing his approval. And so I think that town is covered with the bond that they have, that you have in place now, I think. And that's, that's fair, I think, and I know we talked about that.
Yeah, it, it seems that the amount is appropriate since, given that he's maybe a third of the way through, and there doesn't appear to be any damage from.
No, and if you looked at it from the point of view of, of having the road severely damaged, and that's how we came up with the price, but I don't think that it'll ever get to that point. So I think they were covered.
Okay. So discussion about extending the bond for five more years?
I'll make a motion, if we need a motion to extend.
There would have to be a motion, yeah.
You have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, Robin and Peter? Any further discussion about this?
Can I ask a question? Do we have to update the agreement?
No, I would just say we should, we should have this set of minutes allowing the extension be, be added to that agreement.
Okay.
So we don't have to do any memory and all that?
All right. Any other comments? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that is it. We have a request to release the funds for 22 West Shore Park Road in Kingston from James Matarkowski, uh, for the balance of the funds. There we go.
We don't need all that.
I don't need all that? Okay. That was for the Green Cocoon Project. He's for the Green Cocoon, I don't, he called the project-
He named it ADU.
Oh, yeah, it's an ADU.
Is that what he calls the ADU?
That's, that's the name of his business or something.
Okay, we're good. Just wasn't sure.
We need a little laugh.
Well, I'm reading this, it's just the Green Cocoon, and I'm wondering, I would've remembered if that had come before the planning board. Okay, so the project is complete and, uh, we have a motion to return his escrow funds.
Yeah, it's, as long as the, uh, occupancy permits have been signed off and then we're moved that we, at least.
Okay.
So that was a motion to release it.
The Green Cocoon is habitable?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, take care of that one. And then the last thing we have, oh, wait a minute. Are you signed? Okay, is, um, Mr. Greenwood has a new contract to extend his services to us.
Was it worth it?
The question is, what's the word?
Let me tell you, I, I wonder sometimes.
I would miss you, man.
Yes, I would miss you.
Now, there's a few years ago where people wanted this to go back out to bid, but I think, um, my personal opinion, not that as Chair of the Board, is that, um, Glenn has been invaluable in his history, not, his, his, not, his knowledge of all of the units, the rules and the regs and what's going on, but also, um, historically what's happened here with the planning board, um, so.
Am I admitting that I think I blew it in 2010? How's that?
I'm here for him.
Make your own decisions. I don't know, I don't understand how that happened, but it happened.
Maybe you aren't here.
So this actually gets signed both by the Planning Board Chair and by the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, this would have to be brought to the Selectmen for approval, um, but I would certainly like us to have a discussion and, and a motion if, um, desired to, uh, decide to recommend to the Board of Selectmen or however it is we would like to proceed.
I will make a motion to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that we continue with Glen Greenwood Services.
GKG Planning.
GKG Planning, not the Green Cocoon.
Not the Green Cocoon. Close though, right?
It, it looked like the order played to me, and were there any changes that we should know about? Did you insert anything in there?
The, the changes, the, the contract price did go up.
Right, but other than that?
Other than that, yes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's-
And we accounted for that, no budget, I believe, so.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Can anybody second my motion?
I don't think so.
I'll, I'll second it, keep this- Yeah, yeah, I, I did, I seconded.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Okay.
Congratulations on your anticipated risks.
And then we have one more. So if any of you remember when we sat here on the planning board, we had a, uh, application come for us about one Meeks Road. Do all the new members of the board know where Meeks Road is? It's across the street, it's behind, uh, Alternative Sales Avenue 125. And there was a old rundown house there, and they, yeah, they tore it down, and, uh, they wanted to put a business there with a sixty-by-one-hundred-foot footprint, and we approved it.
This is for the refrigerated-
No, 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 this is-
No, this is-
Down across from the Shell Station.
This is a guy had a welding shop down in Placeta and he wanted to do it, uh, there.
And I guess-
His mother-in-law died.
Yep. But anyway, it all got approved. So we have this letter in reference to that, to whom it may concern. "I'm currently under contract to purchase this property and looking for the board's approval to construct a new construction metal frame commercial contractor building on a sixty-by-one-hundred-foot footprint. Previously, this board approved a similar project on the same foot, footprint, May first, 2018, and the recorded plan is D-40929. I will be utilizing the same site plan with the same setbacks and building footprint as previously approved. Property will be owner occupied by my excavation company. Proposed use is an allowable use in the zone. Septic design was also previously approved but expired and will be reapplied for. If the board could advise me on the next step required, it would be greatly appreciated. I look forward to working with the town and moving my business to Kingston."
Well, that would be a change of use, so-
Yes.
So it would require a site plan with you.
Uh, not a site plan, just a different tenant.
Sorry.
Nothing was ever built, does that matter?
That's what I'm wondering.
Did we have a-
Nothing was ever built, but we didn't change our ordinances either, so-
Yeah, that's a question.
Site, site plan holds.
Yeah.
But if the use is going to be different, then we typically would require a public hearing for that.
Wouldn't we require at least, at least a letter, just when a use changes of any other, like, existing building, but there's no building? And if it's a construction company, are they having equipment on site?
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me we have to have a public hearing.
Okay.
We, I, I don't think they have to provide a new plan. They're saying they're going to develop to that plan, um, but there has to be a public hearing about the change of use.
Would that public hearing happen after the building?
No.
No, it should happen before.
Because they need to know the use was accepted.
Right, well, Pedro should say that he can't grant a building permit because it's a change of use.
Yeah.
What was the other use?
Welding shop.
Welding shop.
Welding shop. And if this is an excavation business, you said?
That's what they said in the letter.
So, you know, there was no approved use for outside equipment in the original plan, so that would be a significant change.
So, I mean, in that, and with that being the case, we have allowed previous plans to be used and marked up.
Mm-hmm.
The board may require that they do that for this, or they may put a limitation on how many vehicles can be on site. There's a number of different ways you could do it.
So I think that he probably needs a discussion with you.
Yeah, and we definitely, I mean, the word has to be to him that there is an application that has to happen, um, for a public hearing.
Okay.
That's the base information, and then coming to talk to you would be the idea.
I recall there was a buffer of new, uh, in, issues there as well, uh, tree plantings and things like that, so I don't know if there was a quiet bond to be in place for inspections.
I mean, it's, it's right there, the neighborhood starts right behind it.
Right, so I didn't know if inspections had to be done for the development of the site.
Yeah, it says there's a fifty-foot buffer in the plan.
I guess a fifty-foot buffer is required between commercial and residential use.
Correct.
You get to water, you get to pond across the street, and it's just, you need to come in, you need to see what that plan looks like and what they're gonna do. It's not a use column, but it's gonna have equipment.
Maybe.
Are they excavating on site?
It definitely requires additional conversation.
Yeah. Okay. So, yeah, are we all in agreement that Glenn should have a discussion with, um, Mr. Park? Okay. Any other business to come before the board?
I'll remind everybody, there's a candidate tonight, tomorrow night, here in the town hall at 6:30 for the upcoming elections, which will be March 11th.
Wait a minute. Oh, yeah, there's one other one here. HT Properties, Robin, where's that?
It's Glenn.
Oh, it's Glenn. Okay, Glenn, so HT Properties, LLC, 65 foot 125, which is the, um, um, trailer place.
I don't know what it is.
Well, it was the trailer place that had the beauty salon.
It's, I mean, it's, yeah, the tractor place.
Yeah, but, yeah, I guess it's selling tractors now, yeah. It started out just trailers.
The, the last site plan was for the Green Tractor Place.
Yep.
And so we did have a, we had someone who asked us about it last spring, um, to do a, a different kind of activity there that was gonna be, um, like a, a impound lot-
Yeah.
-for vehicles, but, uh, in the end run, he didn't get to do that, uh, but he was gonna have to do a site plan review for that anyway. So what we have now really is, is just a code enforcement issue. They have stuff going on there that doesn't comply with the site plan, so Pedro and I need to talk, we haven't talked, I wanted to get that direction from, from the board, uh, but it's not a, it isn't a request for a site plan review, it's simply that they need to comply with their existing site plan. They have a number of vehicles that are parked on non-paved surfaces, and the vehicles look like they may be very old.
Where, where is this?
It's, um, it's on 125, just beyond the intersection with Hunt Road where the, um, Family Pool is. It's the next property down. It's been changed and closed every time I've gone to see it in the last six weeks, uh, 'cause I hope to talk to the, the owner, but it, there's nobody there, it appears, um, and it hasn't been plowed, um, for any of the snow that had fallen the last time I had gone, um, but they need to be reached out to to tell them that they're not complying.
So at this point-
It's just-
You're gonna talk to Pedro. So matter of procedure. Pedro can only go out if it's an enforcement issue by the Selectmen? Does he, has he then talked to the Selectmen?
Yeah, and they're, they're, they direct him on what code enforcement-
Right, so you can just tell him it's a problem and then he can go to the Selectmen? Okay, I'm just making sure we've got the procedures going.
There used to be a notification of violation form that, there's, I don't know if the Board of Selectmen wants that sort of paperwork still?
I don't think so. I know, I don't. So I would say you talk to Pedro, if you got a issue, then he, he needs to go in there, he's no problem, you're missing.
Yeah.
Just check it out.
Yeah, so that, that's the course we're gonna take on this anyway.
So we all in agreement to have Glenn follow up on this?
Right now, there is no proposal that the use is changing.
Okay.
But there, they have vehicles there that they haven't had historically, and they're not parked on paved surfaces.
Well, Pedro can go in there if there's a perceived health issue also, as the health officer.
Absolutely.
It's a one, one area where he's gonna go on the property, if there's concern about spillage or oil leaks, that's an automatic no, no-brainer.
Okay. Any other business to come before the meeting? Yes, Dennis?
So, um, the site plan for Saddleup, so, one of the conditions there was to put fences on each side at the end of the parking lot so they wouldn't blow snow into the ponds and to the river, so, um, notice that it's being done, and so it's, it's something that was a concern from the Conservation Commission about, um, blocking snow into the rivers, and so I just wanted to bring that up if you're talking about, um, enforcement stuff. So whether you wanna enforce it or not, it's up to you, but, uh, the site plan clearly shows-
It is definitely showing.
Clearly showed that, uh, everyone's supposed to do that.
Had a lot of discussions about that.
I think they were also asked when, when we had the discussion with them to do breakfast service that they needed to fix the fence.
Yep.
And they said they fixed the fence.
I didn't know whether to bring it up or not, but I just thought it would be a good time at this point in time, 'cause we'd probably get a few more snowstorms and continue and be even worse next year, so.
And this Ben's-
It's been a while since we've had this kind of snow too, so it makes sense this year to follow up.
Okay.
It does.
Thank you.
Glenn? You on that too?
Yes, I will, I will.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.